I'd like to call this meeting to order. Mr. Williams, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir?
I certainly will, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll join me in prayer, please. Supreme Architect of the universe, we invoke thy blessing at this time in this meeting thus be conducted in peace and closed in harmony. Amen.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Thursday, August 7th, 2014 Public Business Meeting of the Allegheny County Commissioners. Commissioners, are there any additions or deletions to our agenda?
No, sir.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the July 24th, 2014 Public Business Meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Brody, seconded by Commissioner Valentine. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Under the report of the President, I'd like to read a correspondence that we've received. County Commissioners of Allegheny County, Maryland. Dear Commissioner Mike McKay, I am pleased to provide you with a listing of those selected to receive the 2014-2015 Allegheny County Opportunity Scholarship. Financial aid has already awarded a total of $116,587 and will continue to award these additional scholarships from this fund. My office has notified the students of their awards. The scholarship will make significant impact in their academic success. It does list those students who have received the award. And then it says, "Your commitment to Frostburg State University means that hard-working, deserving students are able to more easily afford their dreams of higher education. Thanks to the support of donors like you, these students can focus on their academic needs rather than their financial well-being. Because of your generosity, they leave FSU not only educated and prepared for a competitive employment market, but without the burdensome loans too many of their peers will face. Thank you for believing in our mission. Your leadership and forward-thinking administration has provided this singular opportunity to the students of Allegheny County. Our students are fortunate to have your support. Sincerely, Stephen Spar, Senior Vice President and Chief of Staff, Executive Director of the FSU Foundation." So we did receive that. That's good news, that that money for the Opportunity Scholarship Fund is working through FSU. It's one thing to have Stephen Spar send a letter of thank you for that, but I think when I go around the state and I talk about Allegheny County, I talk about our natural resources. Commissioner Brody thinks I'm going to talk about coal. I'm going to talk about our most precious natural resources is the people who live in Allegheny County, our students, our workforce. And to speak about how high-quality students that we have in Allegheny County and how I am so proud, here is a handful. One, two, three, four, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. And this is just a handful that have come to my office. And what this is, is this is actually thank yous from those students who have received their scholarship. So we should be very, very proud of our students, A, of going on to college for higher education, but more especially that we've got families here in Allegheny County that are instilling morals and ethics and values that these kids are sending thank you letters. And I'd like to just read one of the thank you letters. Dear Mr. McKay, my name is, and I'd like to thank you for awarding me the 2014-2015 Opportunity Scholarship. I have lived in Frostburg for all my life, and I'm currently a senior at Frostburg State University. I chose FSU because of the student-to-teacher ratio is much smaller than large universities, which makes it easier to develop strong student-teaching relationships. I am a major with the Global Systems Concentration and will be graduating at the end of 2014 Fall Semester. After I graduate, I'd like to find a GIS Technician or Land Surveyor position in Maryland, maybe in Allegheny County. My community grade point average is approximately 3.47, and some of my academic accomplishments are being inducted to the FSU Local Chaper of International Geographical Honor Students and making the Dean's List for the 2012 Spring and Fall Semesters. Also made the Dean's List for 2013-2014 Spring Semester with a distinction of 4.0 grade point average in 2013. Again, I'd like to express my gratitude and appreciation for this award, Mr. McKay, and I can now focus more on my studies rather than how to pay for my school. So that's just one of the letters that we've received. The Opportunity Scholarship Fund is working. It's working for economic development, but more especially, I believe this is a family values issue. We're able to take kids in Allegheny County whose families may not be able to afford to say, hey, we want you to go to college. Now here's an opportunity in which the proceeds that the county has received from Rocky Gap will fill that gap where they can say, yes, son, I do want you to get a higher education. I do want you to go to FSU or Allegheny College. So Commissioners, I report.
Very good, sir.
Good news.
I think it's worth noting, too, there were 99 names on that list, and that's just the beginning.
Yeah, and that's just FSU. So, all right, moving to item number one, gentlemen. This is a citation. We have today U.S. Army Captain Mark R. O'Hara, 48th CSH Bravo Company, EMT Appalachian, Maryland Innovative Readiness Training Officer in Charge, Dragon Medics. Sir, we would like to offer you the podium if you'd like to say something, if you would please, about why you're here today.
My pleasure, sir. Commissioners, other officials, citizens of Allegheny County, again, my name is Captain Mark O'Hara. I am the officer in charge of the innovative, I'm sorry, innovative readiness training for the Appalachian Mountain IRT, which is being held in your area at the fairgrounds on the 13th to the 21st of July, I'm sorry, of August of this year. I am from the 48th Combat Support Hospital, which is based in Fort Meade, Maryland, and we are soldiers from all over the country, actually. I personally am from just north of here in Bedford, so I'm happy to be here to help the locals here. But our mission here, or exercise, I should say, is to provide training for my soldiers and also give a service which includes medical care, optical care, dental, and veterinary care. All of our soldiers are experienced providers. We're all reservists, mostly. We have a few active-duty folks. So the purpose of this is to come together, to hone our skills, and also to be more cohesive. And the key perk is that we can provide services to your area to folks that may not be able to afford it otherwise. So we are pleased to be here. We are working with a wonderful group of civilian counterparts, Mr. Fred Tola from Emergency Preparedness here in Allegheny County, and Ms. Courtney Thomas from HRDC. And we have been working for months, just working together, and we couldn't do it without them, that's for sure. But on behalf of my commander, Colonel Gregory Cole, from the 48th Combat Support Hospital, I thank you for the opportunity, and I also thank you for the recognition tonight, and we look forward to providing great care, a great experience for my soldiers, and a great experience for your citizens of this great county.
Well, thank you very much, sir. If you would, join us up here. We'd like to present you this citation. Allegheny County, Maryland, be it here known to all, this official citation is awarded to the United States Department of Defense Appalachian Mountain Innovative Readiness Training 2014. Whereas Allegheny County Government, Cumberland, Maryland wishes to publicly recognize the Appalachian Mountain Innovative Readiness Training, and whereas, under the overall management and general direction of the United States Department of Defense, this health care event is presented in partnership with the Appalachian Regional Commission and support of community co-chairs, the Allegheny County Human Resources Development Commission, and the Allegheny County Health Department, with the United States Army Captain Mark R. O'Hara serving as officer in charge, and whereas, community partners have joined together to envision, develop, and deliver extensive, important medical, dental, vision, and veterinarian health care offerings to fulfill unmet health care needs. And whereas, human and veterinarian patients will benefit from the services of the talented medical professions, the access to specialized scientific equipment, and the availability of care-specific medical supplies at the Appalachian Mountain Innovative Readiness Training. Now therefore, we as the county commissioners of Allegheny County wishes to highly commend and extend our deepest gratitude to the United States Department of Defense and all entities and individuals associated with this impressive and successful, multifaceted, highly quality high health care project. In witness whereof, we appear on two set to cause the seal of Allegheny County, Maryland to be affixed, his seventh day in August in the year 2014. Signed by all three county commissioners. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you very much.
And since you are here in Allegheny County, we believe it's very important that we present you with an Allegheny County, Maryland pin, and on it is, if you turn around, Commissioner Valentine is going to explain it to you, since you're from Bedford. We won't hold that against you. No problem.
The 1789, of course, that's the birth date of Allegheny County. The symbol in the middle represents the hands on a compass pointing west, since Allegheny County was route west in the days. Then we've got the pick and the shovel honoring our coal heritage along with the coal cars, canal boats. We've got the travel, that's the wheel, centered on Route 40, our smokestack industry, of course, the churches and the stables in the top, where the mountains make Allegheny County what it is.
On behalf of all three commissioners, here's a pin. Hope you wear it properly.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Give them a round of applause. Thank you. Okay. It's actually a combat, what do you mean, resort.
Very good.
Hopefully you can make it down.
Thank you, John.
Thank you very much, Captain.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, gentlemen, we're going to move right into our action agenda. Item number two is the Mountain View Landfill Agreement. Come on down, Mr. Cale. You're next as Director of Public Works. All right, so it's a landfill agreement. Big money, big money.
No.
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 We entered into an agreement with the Mountain View Landfill some years ago. It's a 25-year agreement that expired 2033. In that agreement, there's two clauses. One, that says that adjacent counties cannot, we cannot charge, the landfill cannot charge adjacent counties less than what they're charging the citizens of Allegheny County. Then there's another clause in there that says that they could give a discount to large haulers, but it had to be approved by the county. It didn't say what large haulers was, but so we'd have to go to the county commissioners and ask for that. Since then, one of the local garbage companies has built a waste transfer station out behind the prison. And what happens is now we're putting our landfill, which kind of we have agreed with Allegheny County's landfill, we're putting them in a competitive disadvantage because they cannot lower their rates. So what we're asking for, and Bill and I have looked at this, we're asking to eliminate those clauses for now, and we'd agree to do it for a two-year period in case it does cause some kind of conflict that we're not aware of. We cannot think of anything. And to remind you, in our landfill agreement, there's a clause, when we first started this in 2013, we established a rate, and they cannot raise that rate higher than the Consumer Price Index. So each year, they can adjust rates on April 1st. So our rates for our citizens are capped, so they cannot raise them, so it will not affect us. It may only help us, because I expect we'll probably get back to them and talk to them about trying to get a better rate, too. So what we're trying to do is put them, right now, they're at a competitive disadvantage, and we want to eliminate that competitive disadvantage for the landfill we are operating in Allegheny County. Bill, you have any comments to add?
Well, the only other comment, just for those who don't know, that the entity operating the transfer station, that garbage is actually hauled out of state to another landfill that they own. And so this really puts everybody in an even playing field, it seems to us.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of County Commissioners approve the amendment to the landfill agreement of Mountain View Landfill Incorporated to eliminate the enforcement of subsection 4B and 4G for no less than two years. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner McKay, seconded by Commissioner Valentine. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Item number three, Bedford Road Sewer Rehabilitation Phase Four, the Mill Run Contract Number S-81. Are you?
I'm pinch-hit for Dan, so I.
You don't look like Dan.
No, he's much younger, but.
Well.
A lot faster, these days.
Easy, sir. Easy?
Easy.
Okay.
This is Bedford Road, what happens in 2009, we entered a consent, well, earlier in 2005, we entered consent with Maryland Department of Environment. We have overflows in Bedford Road Sanitary District. As a result of that, in 2009, we completed a study, and the study basically went through, we monitored all the areas and metered it, and what we did is we prioritized areas that we were going to improve first. We have completed the Ioka Basin, which is, we turned that basin into all grinder pumps, and it's shown remarkable improvement there. We don't have overflows in that basin now. We replaced Shades Lane, a portion of Shades Lane, and we're currently in the process of completing Highland Estates, which should be completed sometime later this summer. Now we have, going to the fourth phase, for the Mill Run area, which we identified as the next area that would be improved, and Maryland Department of Environment is offering us $875,000 grant, which will not have to be paid back, and $125,000 loan. And we are asking permission to sign those documents. Right now, our Utilities Division is currently out in that area. We are televising that area to try to find the worst areas we repair, that we'll repair. And we're also smoke testing, which means we put smoke in the lines, and it comes out, the cracks, et cetera, and we'll try to separate them from the system or improve them. We're hoping to do a spring construction. If we sign the documents, we must have approved documents to them by December 1st, and we are designing this in-house, and we're moving forward. And the really good part about this is the loan that was on Bedford Road, the original loan was a 25, 30-year loan. It was paid off, and we kept that money in place, so we built up a surplus, so this will not require any adjustments to the rates at this time.
Oh, thank goodness.
We'll be able to do things the same.
Yeah, that's all we needed.
Can't always do that, but this one here, we do have a surplus. So we're asking permission to move forward the design and bidding of this, and ask to authorize the President County Commissioners to sign all the documents.
Okay, Commissioners, looking for a motion to accept item number three, the Bedford Road Sewer Rehabilitation Phase Four Mill Run Contract Number S-81. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Brody, seconded by Commissioner Valentine. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, sir. What a good deal, when we can get a million dollars for 125,000.
I'll buy that.
Makes me almost feel like an attorney for a minute.
That'd be an attorney, Anderson, right, didn't it? Anyhow, okay, item number four, Mr. Barclay. I see that your clothes are becoming to you.
Yes. And someday it'll get to you as well.
They always.
Is that a promise? Yeah.
Oh, that's a promise.
Thank you, Commissioners. In an effort of transparency, we bring you item number four. County staff is asking for authorization to solicit pricing from a selected professional services design team to produce final construction drawings to build a 40,000-square-foot shell building, expandable to 80,000 square feet, in the Barton Business Park. And this is going back to our standard procedure, basically, within the bids and contracts section of the county code by doing this.
Mr. Rett, you good?
Yeah, I mean, this is, we're going in, designing, and then we put out the bid once we have the design, right? In the normal.
Right. The intent is that we, county staff, with the help of some staff from Public Works, we'll assemble a team and we'll question some local design folks for all different aspects of the, you know, civil, architectural, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and structural. And we'll get that done. It's to be anticipated for later this fall, to have construction drawings, and at that time, then, the county would have the option to pursue, to put those on the street for competitive bid process to the lowest responsible bidder.
Okay, all right. Very good. Okay. Well, Commissioners, I'd like to move for, to accept item number four, professional services, as it pertains to the proposed business park, park shell building. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner McKay, seconded by Commissioner Valentine. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Now, it is, look, we have a celebrity here tonight, everyone, an absolute celebrity, live from Kelly Road, it's David K. Nedved, Esquire.
It's Philip Seymour Hoffman.
What do you have here? What is this item number five here?
I, we have.
In 50 words or less.
Yeah. We, we were informed by the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development back in December that there was disaster recovery assistance available to cover four different storms we had before the more recent storm we just had. And in particular, for us, it would have been Hurricane Sandy. And it turned out that $3 million was available, basically, to be split by 21 counties. And to give credit to Elizabeth, Mrs. Stallman here, I, we were both at the same workshop, and she said to me, she says, I said, we don't have much chance of getting this money, but as it turns out, today, we are signing, we are asking you to sign the grant agreement, because we did get money. It turned out that I was very much mistaken, and out of 21 other counties, the bulk of the money went to Somerset County, but out of the other 21 counties that could have applied for this money, only five counties applied for it, including us. And so we got $240,000 for flood buyouts, and we got $55,000, basically, to buy through Frostburg. Frostburg's going to, that's going to help Frostburg buy backup generators. And I'll let Mrs. Stallman talk about her project, and I'll let Mrs. Stoneberger talk about her project. Mrs. Stallman.
Thank you, Mr. Nedved. Thank you, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Good evening. The city of Frostburg experienced extended power outages at both the Frostburg Water Treatment Plant and the Savage Pumping Station, which is part of our water system, following Hurricane Sandy. I'm pretty sure we spent about $7,000 in diesel fuel at the treatment plant on the generator during that time. At the time, there was no generator at the Savage Pumping Station, and the generator that we're using at the treatment plant has very much exceeded its useful life. So the city leaders began to pursue the purchase of two new generators. The city was awarded $170,668 from FEMA through the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, which covered 75% of these project costs. With the announcement of the CDBG disaster relief funding, the county commissioner's support of the project allowed the city to secure the additional $55,000 of grant money that Mr. Nedved mentioned. These grant dollars have offered savings to the Water Surcharge Fund at the city, allowing the mayor and council to reduce water surcharge rates for the 2015 fiscal year for both the city and county residents that are customers of the Frostburg Water System. So again, on behalf of the Frostburg Mayor and Council, I'd like to thank you for the support of this grant and the sub-recipient agreement with the city of Frostburg, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I have none, Commissioners.
Elizabeth, the Savage Pumping Station's actually what pumps into the treatment plant, correct?
Correct.
So without the generator at the pumping station, it kind of makes the treatment plant, kind of takes it offline, then?
Yeah, we have generators at the dam, which is about two-thirds of our water, but the pumping station's actually, it's a lot more efficient to pump water from there than it is from the dam, so in a power outage, it's definitely going to help.
Well, that's going to be great to hear for all the residents, county residents, because people need to realize how big of an area you guys actually serve.
Yes.
Out into the counties, Carlos Woodland Shaft, all surrounding in Mount Savage now, so we're tickled to death to hear that.
Okay, well, thank you.
Ms. Stoneberger.
Good evening, Commissioners. So as Dave Nedved had indicated, the county's being rewarded $240,000 for flood buyouts. The, this money's going to be funding the acquisition and demolition of up to eight footprint properties in Allegheny County. If you remember, in January 2014, there was a press release where the county was requesting stakeholders who wanted to be added to the flood buyout list to notify the county, and in turn, the flood buyout list extended from 10 to 15 properties on the list to over 75. So there was a good amount of interest expressed by the public through that article. And so there was a panel of staff members that were formed to review all 75 properties, and they were ranked according to a number of criteria, such as being located in the FEMA Winter Floplane. Previous flooding was also another criteria, in addition to an assessed value of the property. So as a result of classifying these by criteria, staff concluded that the top winners were eight, and that they're located in both in Driver and Watershed Basin, George's Creek Watershed Basin, and Will's Creek Watershed Basin. In the Driver and Watershed Basin, there are three properties located along Valley Road that were selected, in addition to one property in the Locust Grove area, and in four, just north of Barton, in the Nickup area. So since this is a $300,000 project, CDBG is funding $240,000, or 80%. The remaining amount theoretically would be funded by the county, but in conjunction with working on the CDBG grant application, I'd also submitted a grant application to MEMA, a Hazard Mitigation Grant Application, requesting additional funding for the project. To date, I have not been notified of whether or not we've been rewarded or not. I tried making contact with MEMA today, a representative, but did not hear back from him. In June, I did talk to him, and I believe at that time, he had indicated that our application was at the federal level, being reviewed. The only, I guess the county will be liable for some in-kind services for the project, but should not lead to any kind of monetary out-of-pocket expense. Any questions?
Nope, I'm good. Commissioners? Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you, David. Gentlemen, I'd like to entertain a motion that we accept item number five, the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development Block Grant for Disaster Recovery Assistance. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner McKay, seconded by Commissioner Valentine. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You know, it is a shame that we had to do that, but to talk about people.
You know, it is a shame that we had to do that, but to talk about people's homes.
Right.
You know, it's a terrible thing.
All right. Mr. Everly, what do we have on our consent agenda this evening?
Commissioners, a very brief consent agenda, one item for the reappointment of two members to the housing authority of Allegheny County.
Okay. Commissioners, I'd like to entertain a motion to accept our consent agenda. Is there a motion? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved by Commissioner Brody, seconded by Commissioner Valentine. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. What say you, there, county administrator, David Devenaire Dashing David Everly, better known as BW Boy Wonder?
Nothing this evening, sir.
I mean, I've just built you up.
You did.
I mean, that was just.
Just.
That's right. Sounds like my water bed. Mr. Rudd, anything on your desk? You're not the commissioner?
I don't know if that's a promotion or demotion, but I'll.
I can answer that for you, if you like, but.
Yeah, that's right.
It's definitely a demotion.
Yeah. What I have this evening is a follow-up.
Pay responsibility.
Anyway, a follow-up to a, an issue that we dealt with several months ago, or, anyway, it came before the commissioners, several months ago, and that deals with the complaint about the property at 13004 Fleetwood Drive, northeast, off of Bedford Road, generated by residents in the area who sent a letter to Commissioner, or, excuse me, to, that's definitely a demotion, Delegate Kelly, and of course, then came to the county commissioners. Based upon, and I want to make this clear why this happened, because this is not a knock on anybody that wrote anything, except I don't think that the person who wrote the editorial at the newspaper understood why Mr. Levin and I had a conflict, and why we sought outside counsel to give the commissioners advice. In the letters, both from Mr. Kelly and from the residents, much was made of the fact that the property in question is owned by Steve Stallings, who is a county employee, a contract county employee. Mr. Levin and I deal with Mr. Stallings on a regular basis. He's involved in code enforcement issues, dealing with unsafe structures and that sort of thing. And it would have been totally inappropriate for me or Mr. Levin to give an legal opinion about his property. You know, it's no win. So it was our recommendation to the commissioners that outside counsel be retained. That happened. J.C. Duncan, a local attorney, was retained. She has no dealings, had no prior dealings with Mr. Stallings, with the property owners, with any county government issues, and so she was clearly neutral. The commissioners at your June 5th meeting voted to allow us to get outside counsel. Ms. Duncan was given the assignment on June 17th, and she completed her report, actually, on June 24th. And so I just want to report that she did complete that report. I will provide a copy to the press. And basically, her conclusion, after going to an on-site visit, taking a lot of pictures, doing an investigation, was that the property was not in violation of the county code for anything at that time. That doesn't say it might not have been before, but based upon her examination, you know, when she went out there, that was her conclusion. So as far as we're concerned, the matter's closed. But anyway, the report's been given to the commissioners. As I say, I will provide a copy with her supporting documents to the press this evening.
Commissioners, of course, we did receive that report. I'm satisfied with it, then.
Yep.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. Anything else, sir?
Nope.
All right. Commissioner Valentine, what say you?
Well, next week, all three commissioners will be attending the MAKO Summer Conference. It's always a very worthwhile conference. Mike will be chairing a rural county coalition meeting that will be held at that conference. We'll be in attendance for that. All three of us will be completing our training through best government practices down there, so we hope to put in a good full week at MAKO.
Okay. Commissioner Brody.
Very good, sir. And just for the record, you're not allowed to have any more sugar today.
No.
No, I believe you're wound up on something, but. One thing I'd like to, while everyone's.
I'm high on memories. Memories of the way we were.
Could we kill the mics, please? And take my hearing aid. Personally. Oh, you're going to kill Mike. No, just in short, I was contacted today by the new PHA chairman, Dr. Greg Wolf, and he felt as a, since Allegheny County is the major contributor to the funds at the airport for its operations, that he would like to have a work session with us, just in case you or Bill, or even myself, had any questions. He's got some things in there. Pipe park, it's moving, so he was most excited, and I said I would bring it up tonight to Mr. Everly, to maybe put something on towards the middle or end of September, or first of October, and we'll have a work session with him, so.
Perfect. I think that's a great idea. Appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Ms. Linda, what's your favorite show tune? I'm taking requests.
You don't have.
You don't have anything?
Nope.
What?
Thanks, everyone, for attention this evening. We appreciate it.
Okay, we'll just remind everyone that our next public business meeting and karaoke night will be Thursday, August 21st, 2014, 5:00 in room 100. I'd like to thank everyone for participating in their government, and we hope you have a nice evening.